And, Mr. Manager, I think we're going to have a little information session on economic tourism.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Duhany, Mr. Stiles. It's nice to see you all this afternoon. I'm here today to share the results of the Tourism Economics Report that was commissioned by CBB in 2021. In late 2021, CBB commissioned Tourism Economics to analyze and research the travel sector of the Virginia Beach economy. Tourism Economics worked with our Budget and Management Services Office and our City Auditor's Office, so I'd like to personally thank Kevin Chadelier and Lyndon Remus for their time and dedication to this process. I'd also like to thank Taylor Adams, who created a successful economic vitality portfolio with a culture of winning. With that said, I'm very proud of the results that Tourism Economics has provided us, and I'm confident that this report is the most comprehensive one we have had to date. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Jeff Locker. Jeff has been with Tourism Economics since 2015 and currently manages a variety of economic impact studies in the International Travel Database. Also joining Jeff is Dan Roberts, who's the Senior Economist for Tourism Economics. Dan has more than six years of hospitality industry experience, diving into insights around travel behavior, research trends, patterns, and all levels of geography from individual destinations all the way up to the broader macro economy. Finally, I'm looking forward to seeing everyone tomorrow morning at our State of Tourism event at the Virginia Beach Convention Center. I hope that you all can make it. And with that being said, Jeff, the floor is yours.
Jeff, welcome.
Thank you very much. It's great to be here. I think we bid on this project maybe a little over a year ago now, and it's great to finally be here and share the results with the council. So what we're going to do today is kind of cover three main topics. The first being just an overall look at total visitor volume to the city and the spending from these visitors. The second being, what's the economic impact of all this spending? What does it do for jobs, wages, taxes, et cetera? And then finally, you know, give these impacts some context. You know, what are the trends over time? What do these numbers mean besides just some big numbers with dollar signs in front of them? The first thing I want to do is emphasize that, you know, we look at a lot of databases and take a lot of information into account, and then try to figure out, you know, what's the best answer for these questions in terms of all the data sources. So, you know, just briefly, this includes tax collection data from the city itself. STR is the number one provider of hotel performance data. AirDNA then tracks the, what the short-term rentals we usually call them, Airbnbs, VRBOs and the like. And there's cellphone location data from near. There's government data from the BEA, the BLS, Census. There's survey data from Longwoods, who surveys tens of thousands of tourists every year. And then, you know, some of our own data on international travel. So, all that to say, you know, this isn't based on, you know, one or two pieces of information. We're really looking broadly at all the data we can get our hands on to come up with what we think the best answers are. That said, to get to it, just a great number for visitor spending. 2.1 billion in 2021. That's up a total of 38% from 2020 and is even up 8% from the pre-pandemic high of 1.9 billion. So, a new record, the first time over 2 billion in city history. But, we're still down in visitors. We have that at 11.5 million visitors in 2021. It's up 9% from 2020, but still down 15% from the pre-pandemic high. So then, you know, that leads to the obvious question, how can you be so much higher in spending but still down in visitors? The big thing driving this is that the right kind of visitors are coming. Those being the overnight leisure visitors. These are the people that spend the most time and the most money when they come to visit. So, we're up 7% in that crucial overnight leisure market in 2021 compared to before the pandemic. So, you know, that's really the key market. That's what's driving record spending, is the increase in leisure visitors. At the same time, we've seen really big increases in per visitor spending. Some of that's driven by this change in market mix. Those high spenders are becoming a larger and larger share of the market. And then inflation and increasing room rates, gas prices, et cetera, are also helping drive big increases in spending. We have the overnight visitors spending 23% more per trip than they were before the pandemic, and the day visitors spending 17% more than they were before the pandemic. You know, we have data on, you know, five different categories of where they're spending. What's really leading this is lodging spending. Again, the leisure market is important because they're not super price sensitive. They will spend money on higher room rates to have these nice family vacations. So, lodging spending up 20%, or sorry, 20% compared to before the pandemic. 53% increase from 2020 when you had really low room rates. Other than that, food and beverage up 9%, transportation up 4% from before the pandemic. So, those are the categories that are really driving spending here. And, you know, those are some of the more important categories. We have 70% of all spending is on food and beverage and lodging. And then transportation, 11%, rec and retail taking up the rear there. So, moving on, what does all this spending do? And a little bit what we're going to talk about, that's probably hard to read, so we'll just talk through it. We measure what we call direct, indirect, and induced impacts. So, the direct impacts we're going to talk about is the spending directly by the visitor and then the jobs, the wages, that are supported by those businesses that are directly exchanging hands with the visitors. Then, we measure indirect and induced impacts. We do this through modeling software called MPLAN that creates a model specifically of the city and how money flows through the local economy. The indirect impacts are additional business-to-business sales created by the visitor spending. So, the example here might be a restaurant that gets money from a visitor. It might need to pay rent, pay the utilities, buy some plates, buy some food locally. So, that initial injection of money creates additional business-to-business sales. Then there are the induced impacts. Again, sticking with our restaurant, now we have a waiter or waitress that gets a salary. They're taking that, they pay rent, they buy a car, they buy groceries, et cetera, et cetera. Those are additional induced impacts. We sum indirect induced up with the direct impacts, and we have total impact. So, that's what we're going to be looking at at the next few pages here. So, we have that $2.1 billion number on the left there. That's the direct visitor spending. Once we add the indirect and induced impacts, we get to our total economic activity of 3.3 billion for the city. And I will say, you have the copy of the full report there. This does have a full breakdown across, I think it's 18 different segments of the economy. You know, both graphs and numbers, you know, little, not really presentation-friendly, but it is in there. You know, just wanted to briefly say, you can see things like food and beverage up top there, very heavily involved directly with the tourist. But then you have other categories like right below it, finance, real estate, insurance, that has a very low share of direct sales with tourists, but high indirect induced impact. So, it makes it a fairly big impact in total. You know, and that is also available for jobs and wages, but I'll let you thumb through that in the full report. For jobs, similarly, we see about 24,500 direct jobs related to tourism. Once we add the secondary impacts, we get up to 31,000 total jobs sustained by the tourism sector in the city. I should say, this follows the government definition of jobs, which does include part-time jobs, does include seasonal jobs, includes the gig economy. You know, a very holistic look at the jobs created. And then next, we have income, directly, just over half a billion dollars of labor income for the city, and then 800 million once we get those secondary impacts. And definitionally here, we're including both salary and benefits as income. Finally, the fiscal impacts. In total, there are almost half a billion dollars in tax revenue, supported by the tourism economy. We have state and local there is about 300 billion. We do have a separate breakdown of state and local taxes. It's about 200 million for the city, 100-ish million for the state. You can see there, the big drivers of city taxes would be bed tax, meal tax, amusement tax, and then property taxes at the bottom, about 200 million annually in total. And finally, you know, where is this headed? What's the context behind these numbers? So, first off, just to look at the trends we've seen over time. Compared to before the pandemic, we're ahead in spending. We're also ahead in income and state and local taxes. But we are behind in job-supported. So, the 2019 job-supported figure is about 8% higher than the current figure. So, we still have a lot of jobs to make up in the travel economy here. A big driver of this is there's been kind of a migration towards full-time work as opposed to part-time work since the pandemic. So, even though the numbers fall smaller, there's a lot more full-time jobs in that number. The other driving factor here is inflation. And inflation boosts the spending, the income, the taxes supported, but doesn't boost the job-supported. So, between that shift towards full-time work and inflation is the reason that jobs are lagging behind the recovery compared to our other key economic indicators. Finally, what do these numbers mean? So, 31,000 jobs. So, that's about 15% of all jobs in Virginia Beach that the tourism economy supports. The 808 million in labor income would be equivalent for about $4,700 for every household in Virginia Beach. And if you look at the almost 300 million in state and local taxes, that's an offset of $1,700 for every household in Virginia Beach that they no longer have to pay because the tourists are paying that for them. And that's the quick overview of the report. Happy to answer any questions you have with that brief overview, or in the future, once you have time to review in full.
Oh, sure.
Thank you for the brief presentation.
Of course.
Can you tell us how we're comparing with our perhaps sister cities, not just here at Hampton Roads, but those that we tend to compete with from a tourism standpoint in terms of recovering?
Sure. So, you know, in general, across the US, we're kind of seeing tourism spending is just about now, maybe last summer, kind of catching back up to the pre-pandemic level. So, you know, you're ahead of the country as a whole. At the same time, the places that are doing well tend to be either rural or on the beach, you know, places where people can spread out and have vacations. So, you know, I can't speak for, like, you know, Myrtle Beach is doing huge numbers. The Golden Isles down in Georgia, huge numbers. So, it's not unprecedented that you're above the pandemic. You know, we are seeing that in select destinations, but it's not the norm across the US.
Thank you.
Rosemary, then Glenwood.
Great report. And so many times we're asked, you know, why are we investing so much in tourism? And this data is extraordinarily valuable. And a lot of times, we like to say, it saves people so much on their real estate taxes. I thought we could say 10 or 11 cents, you know. So, do you have an idea of how much the average household saves on their real estate tax?
You know, we didn't break that down. You know, we have that 1,700 in total, but yeah, we have not broken that down. But yeah, if that's of interest, we'll put it on the to-do list.
Yeah, we'd like, that's something we like to tell our citizens, that it saves you 10 or 11 cents on your real estate tax, which is significant. And I remember one of my good friends in Chesapeake says, well, gosh, you've got that darn oceanfront to keep your taxes low. Thank you.
Okay, Glenwood?
That was my question.
Hey, that's good. Anybody else at this point?
I can't resist this question, Jeff. I was wondering how you thought we did so well, given that we're the least romantic city.
Speak for yourself.
My wife is going to be very disappointed when she reads that report. We don't agree with that, but I just had.
I was going to say, I think I'm missing a little context here.
There was a report out today, I think it was like 40 or 50 cities, and had Virginia Beach was the least romantic city of the.
Well, I was just thinking I should have brought my wife down here with me, so.
Hey, anybody else? All right, thanks for encouraging numbers.
Thank you all for having me. And once again, we're going to keep working with the city, and we'll be in touch as needed. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, at this point, is there any city council discussion initiatives or comments? Okay, Guy?
I just would bring to council's attention, I sent everybody a copy of an email that I sent to John and Patrick today about the Lynn Haven River Now issue that John had sent an email out previously about, that was in our Friday package. I just would encourage everybody to take a look at that. I hope we'll move forward. I don't know what you want to do with that, Mr. Manager, but if you're looking for a head nod, you've obviously got mine in terms of telling, it's the cost issues off the table, which is what I think Mr. Moss has trusted his objection to proceeding. I hope we can support Lynn Haven River Now's request for support of the study itself. I think it's valuable information, I think.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Counsel, I think it was last Friday package, maybe the Friday package prior to last week, I sent the letter that I received from Lynn Haven.
Oh, I'm sorry. I mean, I've stuck it in this past, right? I think you're right.
Yeah. I received a letter from Lynn Haven River Now, and they asked if the city would be interested in possibly doing some kind of engineering assessment. Their concern is that what the state is requiring them to do from their permit with VMRC would cause significant harm to the oyster life and also to the bottom of the river by having to take out some of the oyster concrete reefs that they put in. They asked for us to participate in, to fund a study. Since a week, they have now clarified, and Mr. Tower brought it to my attention, but then about an hour ago, Karen Forgé, the CEO of Lynn Haven River Now, said she's no longer asking that the city pay for it, but they would still like to move forward with the study, and they would like the city to acknowledge that they support this. If this is something that council wants, this is, I would need some kind of head nod to move forward with supporting this anywhereship or for.
So, they just wanted to please support them doing the study?
Is that the question?
Correct.
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 I don't see a problem with them doing the study.
Anybody object to going forward? Yeah, let's move forward.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else at this point? Okay, great. Moving along, how about city council agenda review?
Okey-dokey. So, these are the items that we have speakers on. So, we will keep pulling number two, number three, number five, and number eight. So, besides those, does anybody have any issues with the ordinances, resolutions, 1 through 11?
Okay, 2, 3, 5, 8.
I think it's actually four, not five. 2, 3, 4, and 8.
Yes, Barbara?
Well, I won't pull it, but I do have a question about five. I believe at the budget hearings, when we at the last minute added several things, I made some comments about the fact that we were doing things out of our process with the COIG Committee. That's the Community Organization Grant Review and Allocation Committee, which we appoint to allocate to nonprofits and organizations. And when we do it directly, that all of that is bypassed, and there's no follow-up. This program, I mean, we only had 20,000 in it for the year, and we've exceeded that. So, we're just handing out taxpayer money without any review or follow-up. And I think we, I would like for us to ask the COIG Committee to look at the process because I know they have a very extensive procedure for reviewing applications for funding and following up. And a lot of the folks ask for funding from them that don't get it. And they've had to go through this process, whereas we have this procedure which bypasses all of that. And I really think if we're going to have that process, it ought to be for everybody, except maybe an extreme situation, which is what I thought we had here. But I just have to say, there are an awful lot of really good organizations that give Thanksgiving baskets and Christmas baskets, and we don't hand them $5,000 of tax money. So, I just don't think that's something we can do in this case, and I'll have to vote against this one.
Okay, I think it would just be prudent that, you know, as we, you know, we're going to have, you know, a different composition of council coming up, we're going to have a retreat coming up. This, you know, certainly could be, you know, a source of, you know, discussion. You know, I'll tell you what, it's a matter, we have a tremendous amount of needs out in the community right now. And, you know, hopefully, you know, we're going to, you know, find some of the, you know, other alternatives for, you know, funding with some other helps from the community. But that's, you know, that's going to be an initiative that's going to be, you know, come to light pretty soon, Mrs. Counsel.
I really think our whole process of having, I mean, when we started this years ago, it was because we had come to the point that we were spending a lot of our budget hearings deciding how much each of these groups was going to get, and that was the main thing we were looking at. So, we created the COIG Committee to do those reviews for us. And they've been doing an outstanding job, and it's been working for a long time. But if we're not going to use that process for everybody, I think we really have to reexamine what we're doing. And so, that's my concern. And I think it would be very good to ask them to give us their opinion and what they see and what their process is. So, that's my concern.
Sure. Sabrina?
So, I would just say that.
You're okay?
Oh, you're one? Okay, good. I would just say that I'd like to see consistency as well because I saw two of these grants approved last week with no problem. And I've actually sit and watched several of them approved with no problems, no issues, no comments. So, I don't know what the difference is when I bring one forward. I hope there is not selective processing and approval here. But I would agree with one thing, we do need fairness across the table. Look at each one, make the same comments on each one, and make sure each request goes through that same process. Because I, if we're going to do this for one, you got to do it for all. And I don't think this one should be the time that you make comments in terms of, you know, you have a right to vote whichever way you want. However, what I see here is selective process. And I hope I'm wrong, but I would say this particular group, it has been very instrumental in serving the citizens of Virginia Beach. They have participated in countless outreach, food programs, poo drives, even in concert with the city of Virginia Beach. And they've been very consistent. They serve the community, and they continue to give back and have never asked for a dime. This particular instance is they are giving back, and they requested some assistance for this particular event. And myself and the mayor have sat down and talked with them, and we know the good work that they do. And so, I will hope that this is something that we could approve for an organization who's consistently in the community, consistently giving back to the community, not just of their time, but their funds. Making sure, even at the most vulnerable times in our community during the pandemic, that people receive meals, that they were served, that they were taken care of. So, we're not just not giving money away. No, we are supporting an entity who's supporting the community. And if there is any grant that we should approve, it's one who is working in concert with the city and who is supporting our citizens. I can't think of a better way to do so, or a better organization.
So, Ms. Hill, is that, no, is anybody else?
No, on this particular item?
I do not. I just want to comment, I thought her assessment of what we've done is consistent. We've had approved a number of them, but my advice would be to my future colleagues that sit here is this is a troublesome way to award grants. And if, I think wisdom would prevail, you would force this back into normal budget process of all these organizations, and that council would dissuade itself from trying to be a community problem solver outside the process. And these things all compete, and we ration resources and our responsibility. And I think that would take a tremendous burden off of you individually to have a comprehensive way that that's done. Otherwise, I think this, but this is just as deserving as any other ones we've approved, but it's a bad process.
Okay, Barbara?
I just want to say, no, this is not selective. I did bring it up right after we had some in the budget process, and since we had not gone forward with this, and these were continuing to come well after we had exhausted the money in the budget, and the city manager had asked us for direction, I think it now's the time. But there are hundreds, hundreds of wonderful organizations in this city that give back. And, you know, when we are tasked with taking money from people in their taxes, I think we have to make certain that we are allocating those taxes in the right fashion. And so, I just think we really need to keep with our process of having a standard procedure. And I'm just asking that we look back at that again.
Okay, Michael?
I agree with all points that have been made. I think that we do have a procedural issue here that needs resolution. But I also recognize that we, by a matter of, really as a matter of course, approved every request that's come before us. So, it's a peculiar time to draw the line about the process. However, I think the process needs to be addressed. And including, I think, when you talk to the COIG Committee, what you'll hear pretty resoundingly is that they don't have enough resources in order to fulfill the request. And there are a number of legacy sort of appropriations that organizations that our community relies on, rely on this. And so, when you take those obligations, those annual obligations out of the pool of money, there's very little to support the smaller organizations that do things like the holiday giveaways or haircuts, or the youth development projects that we've, all of which we've funded, mental health awareness. So, we really have a gap here, and we're obviously tasked to be responsible stewards of taxpayer resources. But I also think that citizens expect the city to support organizations that are serving the community. And I think pretty much most people feel like that's an efficient and worthy and valuable use because we can sort of stimulate and activate that activity by funding organizations that are already providing those services. So, we really have to. So we really have to take a deep dive. And so I'm hoping of whether it's a retreat or a future workshop, if we can get the COG Committee to come and speak with us and we can really review this. And I also think, I would add that sometimes in this, they do an excellent job, but sometimes things come up throughout the year that they wouldn't be eligible for COG funding and they need funding. And sometimes there are gaps. Not everyone knows about the COG funding. So we have to have a little flexibility here. It's a complicated discussion. Obviously, I don't think now is the time to have it, but I think we do need to have it and I hope we schedule a workshop on that or at a retreat.
Okay, Mr. Day.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff and I, especially the budget staff, we were going over and since the past couple of years on the couple of budgets we put together, started asking questions about some of the legacy institutions that we've been supporting. And obviously, whenever councils decide to make a decision to not fund something, we always, people come out in droves, right? But there's some that have been in the queue for about 35, maybe even 40 years. And we were trying to figure out how best to assess that, to see if we want to possibly have a conversation. Maybe it's a retreat conversation on, do we continue with those? Because honestly, if we would make a decision, we could probably create more funds for either COG or the Arts and Humanities Committee or even for the mini grant program if we would kind of consider some of those things are still aligned with the priorities that the council has. But some of them, they've just been getting repeat funding for probably about 35, 40 years. It might be something that we actually want to look at, maybe as part of a retreat conversation.
Yeah, Barbara?
Well, I really think we need the background information if we're going to have a successful conversation. And so I think we do need all of that. But, you know, when we allocated some of the CARES Act money just for the nonprofits because we knew they were not being able to get the money that they would have normally done, my goodness, that list was very long that we, and so it's almost endless because we have so many wonderful organizations in this city. I mean, it is practically endless. And so we really need to come up with some fashion of looking at the need. And maybe it is, you know, we increase arts and humanities or we increase COG or something. So I think we need that background information if we're going to have a worthwhile discussion. I think we all recognize the need.
Okay, at this point, if I could recommend, let's just go forward with it on the consent agenda today with the understanding that this will be a high priority discussion at the forthcoming retreat next year in terms of organization. Because, you know, once again, you know, I think a lot of people, you know, brought up some valid stuff, but tell you what, there are needs out in the community that we're going to have to, you know, if we can't, government can't do it all, but maybe if we can find a way with some other, you know, yeah, there will be a suggestion forthcoming.
Anyone else want to?
Yeah, let's go ahead.
Does anyone else want to vote no on this item? It's number five?
Yeah, let's.
So John, to bring you up to speed, we're going to pull two, three, four, and eight. And then we're going to go back over the legislative agenda after we do this part. Okay.
We're just pulling four, we're pulling three, two. I thought it was two, four, I have two, four.
Two, three, four, and eight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so is everybody okay with everybody else, with everything else on the ordinances? Okay. So the planning, number one, that is District Four, Bayside, Delcino.
No issues.
Number two, MM Rollins, Barbara?
Yes, consent.
Number three, Sacred Daggers, that's District Six, Beach. District Five, I don't have a problem with the guy.
I'm fine.
Number four, the Virginia Aquarium Foundation, that's District Six, Guy?
Good with me.
Number five, Russell A. Brown, conditional use permit, District Eight, formerly District Five. So do you have anybody here for District Eight?
District Five?
District Five, okay.
Go with me.
Number six, Green Clean Shore, District Nine, District Four, that's Delcino and John?
I didn't have any issue.
No issues.
And the last one, Sean Andrew Maslany, that's District Six, formerly District Six, Guy?
No problem.
Okay, so then that brings us back to the legislative agenda. So what I thought we would do would be to create a bundle of what at least six people want for the legislative package and then we can vote on that as a bundle as a group. So I'm going to go over each one and ask you, this is going to be interactive, and if you are fine with it, if you think it's okay to be in the package, I'm asking you to raise your hand, okay? So the city charter amendment, that's going to be, that's a separate vote.
That's correct.
So the constitutional amendment on number one, redefining marriage. Who thinks that should be on the agenda for the package? If you could raise your hand.
Can I just ask the city attorney? What is this process we're doing? What is LifeSave Agenda? We had a review for it on our informal couple of weeks ago. And so what is this that we're doing now? It's not on the agenda? What are we doing? We spoke about this, we had a review, a briefing on it. Now are we going through picking and choosing? We're going to bundle? I just don't understand the process. Is that new, something new?
Well, I think what you've historically done is you've gone through and you've said all the ones that had unanimous support and those were adopted in one motion and then you took up the others separately. And I thought that's what the vice mayor said, is that correct?
Was that something?
However, however the body wants to do that.
Yeah, I thought that was for the dais and not for informal session.
We've done this way before.
I'm unfamiliar with it. I've been here four years. I haven't seen us go back through the agenda and then pick and choose. I thought we did it on the dais. I thought we had, my understanding that we had a briefing on the legislative agenda a couple of weeks ago. Everyone sponsored or did not decide to sponsor whatever, you know, legislative thing they wanted. And then we vote on it and we vote what we want to include in it or not. But now it seems like there's, we're voting on, I guess to break it down. I'm just confused about the process.
Well, I could go around and ask, Ms. Hill, which one of these do you want to be in the package? And John Moss, which one of these do you want to be in the package and find out that way?
Yeah, John?
What I recall, my memory's not perfect, but it's pretty good. What I recall is we were asked, is there any item that people want to pull from the agenda? Because it's like the consent agenda, like if you don't, no one wants to pull it, then, and that's a process. I think the conversation was not what you wanted to leave in, but did anybody have something they wanted to take out to vote on as a separate vote? And that's the same logic, it's just changing the syntax a bit, it's the same effect.
We're just doing a consent agenda.
Correct. That's what I'm just trying to trust.
Bundle what enough of us appear and, you know.
Yeah, I was just unfamiliar with, I guess the way you wrote it, it just, it was syntax was just a little different.
I can appreciate where you're coming from.
Or I could say.
Anything anybody want to pull?
Correct.
Right.
I don't have anything else.
Do you want me to go around individually or?
Okay.
Why don't you just?
I think it's just open, right?
Yeah, it's open. Delcino?
Yeah. On item 16, I think that's strictly a state issue and not something that needs to be in our city packet. Certainly, there, I defer to our state delegation. And matter of fact, this issue's been addressed already. So I just feel it's more appropriate for this issue to be in the hands of our state delegation.
Fifteen or sixteen?
It's sixteen on my list.
Are we going to argue these or are we simply going to pull them?
That's my question.
That's what I'm asking. That's what I'm asking.
I guess we need to have the same list.
Ms. Miles comments, I'm fine with them, but we're going to be here a long time if we're going to have to talk about this.
Yeah, you know, I think why don't we just do this? What we're going to, if we're to pull them when we get out to the dais, we'll be out in public.
Yep.
Do you have, did they get all this?
Yes, everyone got a new packet.
This was all this today.
A new packet.
Okay. That's why we're looking at it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did my homework on it.
Is there any other one that people, item that people want to pull?
Well, yeah, I mean.
Legislative agenda or the?
Legislative agenda.
Yes, I respond back. Just be a foundation. The board of the contract already, so it's a new issue.
I didn't know there was a new one, I'm sorry.
I didn't either.
All right, I'm not supporting this.
I would like to add to each individually, if you have anything you would like to pull. Barbara, who would you would like to pull?
I do agree with Delcino that 16 is maybe the right thing for here, but I would just like to comment on item 12 with the resiliency issues. The Green Ribbon Committee did send us a letter and they were adding a few issues that we have had before that were funding issues that I hope will just including anyway. So I think it's fine the way it is, recognizing that those other issues are out there, but we'd like to have the state continue to fund or increase funding.
Is that the only one you want to pull?
Well, the repeal of 1% local tax on groceries, I'm concerned about that one. Talk about how we're going to make up that much money.
All right, is that it?
Give the list of things to cut.
Okay, John, how about you? Is there anything you want to pull?
No, I'll have comments to make on our discussion, but I don't want to pull any items.
So you're happy with everything?
I just mean, I'm happy with everything. I'm, sometimes I have my own personal views, but I think I know what the views are of the people I represent. And so I'm not pulling any items, but I will have comments tonight.
Okay.
I agree with both of Barbara's.
I concur with Delcino and Barbara.
Both those things? Two and 16?
No, 16, not two, but 16.
You want to leave two in?
I'm good with two for 16.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, two's good.
What about me?
You want two in there?
Yeah, yeah, just 16.
Aaron?
I'm good. Okay. I have comments on everything.
Delcino?
But I don't want to pull anything.
Yeah, 16.
I don't have anything additional. I'll vote on the ones that are pulled.
Nor do I.
Okay, you'll, okay, I'm, you need, I need to be.
The ones that are pulled are fine with me to be pulled and.
Number two and 16?
Yeah, those will be fine to be pulled and then we'll debate them out there.
My understanding is whether I concur or not on pulling two and 16 is irrelevant. Therefore, I neither concur nor deny they are done and I have no other items to add to be pulled.
Yeah, that's basically what I.
Okay.
Well said.
All right. Do you want anything pulled, Sabrina?
I don't understand. Can I be more clear? 16.
And everything else can be on consent.
Okay, and I guess this time we're getting ready to move into.
I'm sorry, can I just get some clarification? I just want to make sure I understand. So it won't be on the consent agenda, you all will vote on the legislative agenda as one packet item except for two and 16.
Right. They'll be bundled together.
But it will not be on the consent agenda?
No.
No, it's not going to be on the consent.
But I mean, when I said consent, I meant we're going to vote them as a block.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I'm sorry, I pointed the guy.
Well, I can see if I can picture. I'm going to turn. I, again, I was under the inclination, we had a legislative package last meeting and that if anything wanted to be broken down or separated, it has to be done on the dais. I'm not understanding this consent agenda for the legislative package in here.
Well, Robert's rules say that any member can demand that an item be separated, that an item that contains multiple parts can be separated for a separate vote. If the items are completely unrelated, then it's a demand by a single member requires it. If they are of the same character and are appropriately related together, then the question can be divided on motion and with a majority vote to separate. The way this has been treated in the past, I believe I recall, is that each legislative item was sufficiently distinct that any single member could say, I want to vote on that legislative agenda item separately. And I hope I answered the question. Yeah, it's clear.
And that's why I was trying to get to this point.
You know, it's better to have, you know, at least a conversation here, we'll get out to the dais later.
There's a lot of things here that are, we can vote as a block, which will save us a lot of time rather than worrying about each individual.
All right, at this point, if we can get ready to go to executive. Chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by section 2.2, 3711A Code of Virginia, as amended for the following reason. Legal matters. Consultation with legal counsel implored or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to section 2.2, 3711A8. And that would be Lynch versus the City of Virginia Beach. And then personnel matters, discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees from the public body pursuant to section 2.2, 3711A1. And that would be council appointees, that would be boards, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All right, call the roll call.
Councilor Berluci?
Aye.
Councilor Ray.
Aye.
Councilor Holton.
Aye.
Councilor Miles.
Aye.
Councilor Moss.
Aye.
Councilor Rouse.
Aye.
Councilor Power.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Vice Mayor Wilson. Vice Mayor Wilson.
I'm here. Thank you. Harry Donner?
Aye. Okay, thank you. We are recessed into executive.